They couldn't sell.
Or it's either was.
Yeah, I remember that.
Some of us is saving have some other obligations tonight, so we're gonna try to move this meeting right along. And so with that being said, Carolyn, if you're prepared, and I'll call them the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting to order. And Carolyn, if you could call roll call, please. Welsh here. Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
Would you have a form?
Okay, well, Dan is saying, but like, would you lead us to it?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public service, stands my nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any order of business for emergencies, Carolyn? Okay. And there is no one attending on Zoom, is that correct? Correct. Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So Kelly has moved it. Stan has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion to approve the agenda. Does anyone recognize a conflict of interest that they need to declare on the agenda tonight? Okay, no conflict of interest indicated. Okay, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes some minutes, the claims from the city, the fire department, the library, the budget reports, the community center report, and the sales tax and the cash and money market balance. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Rick approves.
Second.
Mike seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. That brings us to the pay request number two to TDM, Carolyn.
Yes, they submitted a second pay request for the work that Todd, or TDM has been has done. And that is in the amount. Of that. In the amount of.
Sixty-five, five fifty-nine, twenty-five.
Yes. There's a second page to look at, that, you know, is that amounts to and everything, so.
So.
Okay, there's been a motion by Mike seconded by Dan to approve the pay request number two for sixty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five cents? Any further discussion? And this is everything that's been worked on, on our, where we're at so far, with, in the Kelly Avenue Gloria Street project. Is any questions or discussion?
And that's done, correct? That, that, I mean, not the glory, but the Kelly part.
Very close to being done. You can see a street, the water. Caps are sticking in the air and the drain, the ditches along the side of the road.
Seen it at night, just having none of their own things.
Yeah. Okay, so that sounds good then. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to public comments. A person can speak for three minutes to address their concerns. Is there anyone that would like to give public comment tonight? Zach?
I'm going.
Good.
Good. First, I'd like to, I'm Zach Hoffman under, what, I'm under myself. I'd like to first start off by thanking the Public Works for great work that they've done and cleaning the streets and everything, and that he's continuing to, or they are continuing to do, I guess, with them being gone. And I saw them working today. And again, thanks to the businesses like the food center and stuff were being opened for people to be able to get food and everything needed and all that for emergencies. The other deal was, I'm sure, like all you guys know, there's a lot of truck congestion in the South Boulevard and Glen Street area. Is because they had no place to go. We had an opportunity to get a truck stop here to open up an area for these truckers to go and for them to maybe take a hot shower or something where they have been stranded for days in their truck. Some had their kids with them. And they had no place to go because they were stranded in their truck because there was no truck stop for them to go to and park their trucks and do that stuff. If we're really want to keep truck stops out of here, maybe the city should look at doing like a shelter area or something for these people when they get stranded here. So they don't have to walk to restaurants to have a hot meal or something, or and there, there could be showers there. I mean, the powerhouse seems like a perfect option right there. We got city property, a big lot right there that there could be truck parking on there. There's our showers there. There's a food facility placed there that could provide shelter for these people when we do have these types of events. I mean, it just, it made it harder for Public Works to clear the area because of the, all the snowdrifts that I created, same with the DOT. The DOT has South Boulevard. I'm sure they would love to clear all that snow out and not have to deal with all the drifts that was created by all those trucks being parked there. I mean, it's just some things that they felt, and if we can't accommodate these people when they're stranded, then it's not good for us. Thank you.
Powerhouse is a good idea, actually.
Have all the amenities right there for.
Yep.
And again, I've said that this town needs a recreational place. You can multi-purpose that thing into a shelter and a recreational place, but just in the some of the places.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Yes. Carol.
Good evening. Carol Hoppin. An old truck driver. And I will tell you that this was very poor advertisement of all. Very. I have spent time in truck stops in Blizzard, in Bismarck, North Dakota. I've been in Leute, Montana, and we have been held up in South Dakota and in Nebraska. All of those places have truck stops, and those truck stops are very good for travelers, not just truckers. Travelers, because there were people in cars who were stranded here. Yes, they can stay in the motel. But where do they go? Who's open? How do you drive there? You can't carry your kids that through snow there. Get something to eat. I am ashamed that this town is still legate over getting a truck stop. It's the best thing you could do for this town. It would bring people in. They stop at a truck stop. They are right here at Waldruck. Okay. We're gonna eat. Now we'll go with Waldruck, and we're gonna spend some money there. We're gonna get something. And then we can be on the way. We get drafted, we get to whatever. But in a storm, they are a menace. The truck drivers can sleep in a bed, not their sleeper. They can take a shower. They can eat. They can sit and visit with people. They can talk to their dispatchers. They can talk to the company that they're running with. They can get ahold of the company at the other end if they have to be there. Tell them where they are, what's going on. What's going on around them. We are absolutely missing the boat. And I am ashamed of it. Because we're spending money when we could be making it. And is there anybody that wants to spend money when they can be making it? I don't think so. I know I don't want to just throw it in the air and see where it's gonna land. If people want to keep on fighting them, let the people who want to fight them come up with some money. Because we don't want to do it in the city anymore. We want the truck stop. And that's what I've got to say, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me talk.
Absolutely. And you did it right within two seconds of your timeframe. Good job. Thank you very much. Okay, yes, the, the storm, we're gonna address that again later in our agenda. Rare that it runs for five days like that. But it was an overwhelming situation, and Garrett will be here later. He's just running a bit late right now.
It could be ice. We aren't gonna have a sandstorm, but it might be a dust storm. You never know.
Well, it might be a long winter. This is not gonna go away with this kind of temperature. And the, they're predicting above-average precipitation, which God only knows we need it. But there, there's gonna be challenges probably.
I don't know how many people were alive during nineteen forty-nine. But we had a blizzard every three to five days or months.
Myron's dad.
The highway between here and Rapid City with.
You read about that. Myron's dad talked about that often, so.
I did read about it. I lived it.
A quick, quick add-on with her. Um, I'm not with her, I'm sorry, I forgot for me. Um, she mentioned that the, there was like families stranded here too. And with me and Paul and Snow on train road, I did see people pitch a tent in the public park. We, I don't know, the, all the hotels were full, and they couldn't get a room. But they, we did have someone camping in our park. Maybe they didn't have anywhere to go, and they were, I don't know, low on money or gas or whatever, but for some reason they camped around that deal out there. So again, coming back to shelter recreational facility, it'd be nice and. Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you.
I was stuck in a storm over in Minnesota years ago. And they didn't have truck stop either. The thing they did was open up their community center, and that is something maybe we can look into. I mean, this was a weird story. I mean, shiny Christmas. Five days. But, you know, that's something should have been.
I think that was very bad, you know.
What's that?
That was very bad too.
Is that red cross trailer having caught some of that down?
I think we have some here. We did.
No, they're in that trailer, I believe, is where they are. But we had discussed, we were concerned about liability the last time this was in a discussion about opening up this storm. But we, we definitely need to plan something, and the powerhouse is another option too.
Well, I think in the past, we have a community center and times. I guess not a lot of so, but it's, it was unheard of. Well, we can work with that Dustin Willett. You know, he can take a look at our, what we do have for facilities and give us some ideas and work there. I mean, I have for, I wasn't anticipating it happened, and, you know, when they started predicting the storm and the amount of moisture and stuff, I kind of just thought, well, it's gonna be a storm, you know, and that was kind of my bad because I really got hosed, but you know, I mean, props to, you know, all of the, I mean, we gotta learn, I gotta learn something. Phone, I mean, it's, I it was more planning on my part.
But it kept changing. You know, it said, oh, it's gonna be done. Wasn't it Wednesday at five o'clock, and then all of a sudden it was Thursday, and then, you know, it just it didn't keep changing, or at least what I was looking at.
So did you have comment?
We deal with the same liability issues and maybe alternate ways to do it. You guys, I'm sure know about this. Is a writer on the city's insurance policy for storms. And then, I don't know, maybe Stephanie could tell us if there's a way to do a whole harmless or a something of that sort that people were coming into the shelter, they had to agree to sign a whole harmless or a waiver of some kind. And say, you know, we'll open this up, but if you slip and fall on, on, you know, wet tile, I'm sorry, that's the nature of the beast. You know what I mean? Some kind of of hold harmless or waiver, if that's possible.
Okay. All right, good comments. All right, moving to item number eleven, second reading of the audience, twenty-two oh five. And as indicated, this is a second reading.
You've made all those changes and talked about.
Well, this one, there were no changes discussed at the last meeting. But it just needed the second reading. The changes was really with the resolution to think about better than when, then we just moved it to the next meeting. So they would be approved at the same time.
I'm making the group second reading.
Okay, Stan is moved.
Second.
Jerry has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So that indicates a second. And it will be published December twenty-eighth. Is that indication?
In that time, it can get to the paper.
Okay. And then, Resolution twenty-two eighteen, the housing incentives. And the part that she added here was no rebate for the sixth year or after. That was the comment that, that we had a concern about. She did fix that.
And then also that it was just for the city's portion.
Yeah, just clarify.
Yeah.
Hey, would I have a motion to approve?
It's good proof.
Rick, have you? Stan is seconded. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two eighteen has passed. Okay, contingency.
Right, that one. That is just something I put in there just in case, once I run the expenses, if we over budgeted, that I didn't plan for with the supplement, then I can use contingency to something like that, because we did not need to.
So, okay.
It's just a safety net for me.
So that was number thirteen, and we are striking.
Right.
Okay. So then, item fourteen, combine twenty-twenty-three election with county agreement. Please help us understand, Carolyn.
Well, for one thing, this is an off-year for the county. So they would actually just be running the election for us. They would be doing our publication. So all expenses would be our own. In other years, they asked if we wanted to go with them during their election and then share costs. So, and we never do that either. They're way more expensive. We can run an elections quite, quite a bit more efficiently than if we joined the council, but it's not a decision between Alex, Rick, or any of the other stuff. But I would not recommend doing this, that thing.
So you want us to not?
A consensus to not have the county agreement.
But you don't, you don't need a motion just to.
Just a consensus.
Okay, does the council consent to not working with the county on the twenty-twenty-three election? Consent, 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 consent. Okay, there you go. All right. That brings us to item number fifteen, which is the Wall School District Superintendent Report. You've got any snow over there, Miss?
Oh, sorry. Oh, I was busy typing, and then I, so part of that, though, is we do advertise. I would want approval to advertise with the Wall School and the Town of Wausau, and then combine the election with the Wall School and the Wausau Town.
You do want approval for that, okay?
Yeah, that's just the three entities.
Okay. Would I have a motion to approve? Working. Is there a second? I mean, no, no, I mean, yeah, is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved. Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will work with the school in Wausau. And ourselves. Okay, that brings us then, Dr. Pittman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. When I come in, I put my plan on, I got around, I have a mobile, good everyone. Um, I'd like to tremendously thank the city crew for all the help they did up at the school and, and will continue to do. Wow, those guys really worked hard. And right where I was living, where I lived during the storm, it was like they went all the time. I really appreciate all the hard work they did and, and so forth, and you know, it was more a storm than I projected. I, I thought last week that we would be back at school on Thursday. And Friday afternoon, I was like, predicted this. But, you know, it is really hard to predict storms as they come in, you know, and that one was a goofy one, and even what's coming next is coming a little faster than I projected too. So I'm still waiting to see what we do for school tomorrow. But last Monday morning, well, last Monday morning, I, I, about seven o'clock, you know, I had been pacing all weekend on what else to do about this storm, and and it occurred to me, you know, why not try going for a vote? And I, I went to school and I sent an email out to the staff, let's go remote. And I was really impressed. My whole staff jumped up together and provided what the kids need. And Monday afternoon, when they left, grades three through twelve went home online. And grades kindergarten through second grade had whole packets. They prepared for the whole week, and I thought, okay. I thought it was a little bit of an overkill, but I'm sure glad they went all three days because it, it was needed. And since we allowed, we provided education opportunities for every kid in the district, we can call that an actual school day according to the Department of Education. So we don't have to make up those three days. We're done. And, you know, I, I really thought back and forth of, you know, you know, is that, is that a one-to-one education if they were in class? No. You know, you could argue back and forth, no, because, you know, there's just different options at home too, that kids can learn from. Too, and that's something we're gonna look at is learning activities they can do at home during remote days too. But also, you know, I just go to school on Fridays after about four days, three or five days school, it gets harder on kids, especially in the wintertime. And I just really wanted to start twenty-twenty-three. We didn't slate, but we'll see about tomorrow. But so we did go remote. We did send a survey out to all the parents and staff. And we're in the process of getting information, of thoughts, of what parents thought of it, how it went. I, I really think this could be a rough winter. I, I foresee doing this again. Because, you know, January and February are hard, and I, I just don't want to tack on a bunch of Fridays too. And so trying to balance that, trying to work that in the system, but, you know, we have spent a tremendous amount of money on technology over the past couple of decades, and, and I felt that it was worth a try. And what we've seen so far in our survey data is that about seventy-five percent of the people that have responded liked it. And after that, you know, they liked it, but there's some things they would like to adjust and so forth. So everything's good information that's come back in the survey. It is still open. Parents out there, I really appreciate you went to your email and checked it out. Let's see here. The other thing we have going on, and, and tomorrow night, we'll have our school board meeting. We were supposed to have it last Tuesday, but it got postponed and, and we have, have really condensed down our school board agenda for tomorrow night so that we're not we're getting our bills paid. January eleventh, we're gonna come back into session and take care of a lot of the other things we had on our agenda. One of the things with the plan of action to increase the participation on our state assessments, that is something that the State Department of Education has notified us that we are under the required amount stated by law. And so we are working on a planned deal with that. The problem that we have is that it's not about kids not being able to have access to the exam, such as if they were enrolled in the wrong school district, or they couldn't make it into school and so forth. It's a matter of parents refusing to allow their students to take the assessment. And so we are working with, we're going to be working on a campaign to encourage parents and help people realize the importance of taking that assessment because it is state law. And it is about us being accountable for that. So I, a, a letter will be sent sometime next month. Especially after the June eleventh meeting, and we'll move forward on that, and hopefully we will send another letter or more editorials in the paper before we take the assessment, which are usually end of March and through April, so.
Andy, could you briefly just touch on, like, what the consequences are if we don't reach that as a school?
Okay, so we have been identified. We have to put in a plan of action. The state now will decide whether they will accept it or not and go through the process, and they're gonna hold us accountable to show an improvement on that percentage. Okay. Should it be that we don't make effort? We could be looking at the loss of state and possibly federal funding. We could lose accreditation. We, I could be brought before the Ethics Board for not, as a superintendent, not compliant with state law. And the state could hold us, or legally hold us accountable in legal action.
Thank you.
So did this just happen, or has this been going on for a while?
This has been going on for quite some time, ever since the smarter balance assessment was brought out of the Common Core. And I believe that was twenty thirteen, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I was still a teacher at the time. And then when I went to do pre as a principal, we were looking at some data, the whole sheet of data, every school district in the state, showing which school district is distinguished and so forth, and here red, there was a red highlight all the way through the wall. And I didn't know what that meant, so I contacted the teacher here to find out it was the participation rate. And that it had dropped under the required ninety-five percent. And through, since, through, since that time, anytime we didn't meet the participation rate was because of parent refusal. It was not because of any errors. It was not because of, that was it. I mean, if it was a matter of correcting something on our infinite campus or providing transportation to bring the child in, we could take care of it, but this is a parent refusal.
About how much in funds are they, we looking at losing?
Well, we, what is it, about two point five million?
Do you put that in all the letters that you sent out to everybody?
The letter that I'll be sending out actually mimics a lot of the editorial that I put out in June about participation in state assessments. And there, and it also states the law that we're held accountable to.
So Kelly just did an article for us for the South Dakota Municipal League Magazine, and talking So Kelly just did an article for us for the South Dakota Municipal League Magazine and talking about wall. And she noted the school and what was the last year we got recognized as a blue ribbon? Do you remember that?
Twenty eighteen.
Okay.
For twenty eighteen and uh.
And so that's why we haven't been getting any of those recognitions and anymore?
Well, they just dropped, they dropped this, the exemplary and the distinguished award program about twenty nineteen, but we, uh the uh National Blue Ribbon Award, we're up for every five years. Our five years have been a year or two. So we have this problem. But you know, it it's uh uh it doesn't give people clear reflection of what's on our report card. And uh you know, taxpayers want uh our schools to be accountable. They want to show uh our priorities and so forth. Well, it's not accurate when you're not seeing the results from every student. And I I would also like to add that the portal that students do take the assessment on, there is a special uh filter put on it, a security filter, so kids can only go into that area and test. They can't go anywhere else nor can anyone else come in. And uh the student information is connected to our uh infinite campus, so when you're enrolled in our school, this gets uploaded to the port, it's the portal that tells us what students do.
So they don't do this test at school, they do it at home?
They do it at at the school. And and that's because some schools did get notified that they're on this list. Um because there were students that weren't coming into school because of COVID. And those kind of situations, well, I could find something, I could work with that, but this is a a situation where you have refusals. And and it impacts the whole district. You know, teachers work very hard to work with students and to get the scores that we have only to not receive the benefit of it.
Are you, or do you see, say what that number of the five percent is? If parent the the distributor missing?
It's about ninety-four overall, and then the subcategories like um you know, you have your boys, your girls, your most, your socioeconomic categories, your special education categories and so forth. Those subcategories are supposed to be at a hundred percent and some, the lowest one is fifty-three. No, no, this is the state assessment. That. You have to take it. You have to take it, but uh we're in a situation where it's a it's a refusal and um you might be able to say, it could get pretty touchy when you're talking parent rights and and you know. Well, kids require, but it is state law that we do this. We are held accountable. Anything else about about school?
I guess, just on that note, um what about homeschoolers? Are they required?
No.
Okay. So when you are a student enrolled in a public school is to take the the state designated and with our parents with students enrolled in public school that are confused.
Yes. But now the the one of the things that's coming out in the legislation that's this next legislative session is um they're trying to work harder in getting vouchers and and that if you saw the budget that the governor brought out, it was scholarships for foster kids. And I don't know if you realize this, but if a foster student goes to a public school, they don't need a scholarship. Those scholarships are to get into private schools and homeschooling situations. So it's one of those situations where, okay, you want public dollars to go into a private educational area, then they have to be held accountable to all the laws and that we're held accountable too. And there are some private schools that go through the accreditation review just like a public school. There are some out there, but you know, um homeschooling situation, I I feel that or or private school isn't accredited, if they take public dollars, they should have to need. Any other questions?
Just like to say congratulations to Schultz girl for her award at the LNI.
Yeah, well, yeah, the the LNI was quite, quite an opportunity for us. And that she really caved up a star quilt for uh sponsorship. All right, well, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
And you really looked good behind that brand new podium.
It's the flannel.
Thank you. Okay, uh Ms. Trask, attorney report please.
I also think there's another call. Okay, um so um probably since my last reports on the Love litigation, um we had the actual hearing uh against Loves, so some of this is gonna be redundant for the council, but it would be more for the public. But um leading up to that hearing, um Loves requested a stipulation for protection order, um which was many, many pages in length, going into great detail about what was not to be disclosed to the public. And the inference was that there was going to be a great deal of financial information and and detailed business um proprietary information um turned over in discovery to support a demand for damages. What we got was actually less than half of a single page that was completely unsubstantiated. Um and it was untimely. They filed it well after the deadline. They were supposed to have filed it and really left the the city scrambling to even um review, let alone have an expert review and produce an expert opinion on their um damages submission that was, I mean, the stipulation for protection far exceeded the number of pages that were actual submission on it too. I think at the hearing, the judge was probably as surprised at Love's damages submission as the city and our attorneys um and probably even their attorneys were. Um so um because of that, the hearing was not lengthy. Um there was not a lot to talk about because the hearing was supposed to be based on all of this information that Loves was going to produce to support a big award of damages against the city. And either they didn't believe that they had um evidence to support that award, or they didn't care to produce it, but it was not produced. Um after that hearing, which was on November twenty eighth, um the judge indicated that she would likely have a decision out by December twelfth. And obviously, that hasn't happened. I wouldn't be surprised if the blizzard affected, it closed down all the courthouses, filing systems, everything, but um we don't have a decision to date. Um so we're, once again, balls in the airport. Um there's not a lot we can do at this point, but wait for the judge's decision. Um before I move on to my next, I I think I would say in conclusion that I would caution the public against um expecting the city to make litigation decisions based on very unusual and extreme weather circumstances that actually affected the entire state. Um that's not a prudent basis for litigation decisions. Um and it wasn't just Wall. It it was Mitchell, it was Chamberlain, it was Philip, Rapid, Box Elder. Um I didn't weather the storm in Wall. Um but I did weather it in Philip. There's not a low truck stop in Philip. We had lots of trucks stranded in Philip. And the local businesses went out of their way to accommodate those truckers. Um even trying to get open when they themselves were snowed in. Um we had local business owners just out of charity hauling fuel to trucks that were going to run out so that they could keep running. Um I'm very proud of how Philip handled the storm, and I would imagine Wall should be proud as well. Um and I would also say, while the enforcement of a whole lot of city ordinances was suspended during this five-day, very unusual storm, what was enforced was the criminal charges and fines on people who traveled despite severe winter storm warnings. Um that said, do not travel, do not come to the middle of the state, do not come to this area. So um and I know, like so many have said tonight, a lot of it was unforeseeable, but again, you don't make litigation decisions based on unforeseeable weather circumstances, so. Uh my next issue is the video lottery ordinance update. And um so Carolyn and I have gone back and forth a little bit on this. Um I am waiting on a callback from the Department of Revenue. Um for a bit of clarification because and I called them yesterday, so um it just kind of got close to the wire and they're probably backlogged a little bit, but um the the underlying um guidance, statutory guidance, is that the video lottery licenses can't exceed the number of on-sale licenses. So um so for the city of Wall, that statute is found in thirty-five four eleven. For the city of Wall, we have less than a thousand. So the applicable language, the number of on-sale licenses issued pursuant to subdivision thirty-five four two four may not exceed three each for the first one thousand population or fraction thereof. It may not exceed one each for each additional one thousand five hundred population or fraction thereof. So that's pretty straightforward, that's not hard. Um so then you get to the the actual video lottery license ordinance, which is forty-two dash seven eight dash sixty-four. Um and it says additional criteria for on-sale alcoholic beverage license seeds in a video lottery license establishment. Municipality or county may consider in addition to criteria to the issuance of an on-sale alcoholic beverage license, the following criteria for authorizing video lottery machine placement in establishments issued an on-sale alcoholic beverage license pursuant to subdivision thirty-five four two, which is what I read before. Um and then it just lists out the number of establishments currently licensed for video lottery proximity to other businesses with video lottery type of business and manner which the applicant proposes to operate, location of the business in relation to other business residential or activities within the same general, within the same general area, extent to which minors frequent the business, and effect the proposed business have on economic development. Those are all additional factors that a municipality can consider, but they're just on top of the underlying that has to be an on-sale license in order to also have a video lottery license. So if if we just start there, we could only have three. But we have, in the city of Wall, we have three. Plus, we have the golf course, which is grandfathered in under a county um on-sale license. So it came in under a county grant of an on-sale license and was grandfathered in. So we have that one. And then we have the Red Rock, which has a restaurant on sale license. So we we actually have more than three. And so that's where Carolyn's running into confusion, and I understand why, because um technically, you know, both of those, the golf course and the restaurant, full-service restaurant license can have an on-sale license. And so potentially, the video lottery could be in any one of those three. In any one of those five. Um but that's not really the way the statute reads, so it's great. And but then, this is where, and this is kind of where my question to the Department of Revenue is going to center. It goes on in in forty-two seven eight sixty-four, which is the video lottery licensing statute. The governing board, so this is a whatever political subdivision, governmental subdivision. So in this case, the council shall certify on each application filed with the Department of Revenue for a license granted under subdivision thirty-five four two, which is what we talked about before, that the three per um one thousand of population. Um whether the business premises is authorized for video lottery machine placements. So one of the questions I have for Department of Revenue is what does certify mean? Because Carolyn has been calling them and they've been saying, this is what you can do, this is what you can't. There hasn't been a certification, there hasn't been a paperwork, a form, anything like that. So is it just a call and they tell you yep or no? Um and if that's the case, the statute goes on, the lottery may issue a video lottery license to those establishments certified pursuant to this section. So I read that to say, if the Department of Revenue says you can, you can. So that's what I am certifying right now. Because and and another nuance to that is, um Carolyn uh emailed back and forth with Laura Cunningham, who's the gal that I'm waiting on the callback from. She's the senior revenue agent at um the state business tax division. And and she said, you have video lottery, they must have an on-sale license. And that's obvious based on statute. Then she says, either RL, which if you see the the list, that all these little acronyms are spelled out, but RL is on-sale liquor, then RB is on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, or RW, which is on-off sale wine and cider. So she's saying any on-sale license could be eligible for video lottery. And um that's where it it's kind of confusing because um in the number of on-sale licenses statute, which is the thirty-five four eleven, it it's talking about like RL licenses, on-sale liquor, and that's it. But then her email to Carolyn says, if you change your ordinance, they could apply for the RB, which is on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, or the RW license, which is the on-off sale wine and cider, as those are not based on population. So again, going back, I read it to mean if they're not interpreting the statute to restrict it to on-sale liquor licenses, we don't have to worry about the three licenses. Or even the five, if you count the golf course and Red Rock. Because she's saying you can include the on-off sale malt beverage and farm wine and the on-off sale wine and cider. So before I make any recommendation about changing our statute, I, those are the things that I want to ask for questions about. But I think at the end of the day, um in the actual video lottery statute, the forty-two seven eight sixty-four, um the governing board shall certify an application with the Department of Revenue for a license. The governing board shall certify an application with the Department of Revenue for a license. Whether the business premises is authorized for video lottery machine placement. And the lottery may issue a video lottery license to those establishments certified pursuant to this section. So I'm kind of thinking whether or not I can ever make sense of how they're. Interpreting the statute to way more on sale licenses than. Three for one thousand of population, if they authorize it and they certify that. Think we're good. But I will do more research on it.
Um, yes, Carolyn, would you work, unless anyone has any comments or questions? Or understands a bit of what we've been hearing, clearly as much. Uh, and I, I don't want to take much more time on this at this point. I can see there's got to be a lot more discussion and research. So Carolyn, would you continue to work with her and, and I realize that we need an answer on this sooner than later. So perhaps by the next meeting, we can get something going here, so. Thank you, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the mayor report. Uh, first item, uh, the South Dakota Housing and Echo Valley update. Uh, we had another Zoom meeting with, uh, South Dakota Housing. With the Echo partners and with Stan and Rick, and we were, uh, would. And we were fortunate to, uh, to go through some concerns that they had indicated to us. But we did succeed in, uh, getting them to get it on the agenda and discussed at their December. Sixteenth meeting. And the board of directors did make a conditional approval of our loan. With the idea that we would meet some different spec- uh, specifications. Uh, one being a rewrite of a covenant with Echo Valley. And another one with, uh, some way of putting some funding aside to help, uh, collateralize the. Um, the loan. So that was extremely good news to get. Uh, to that point, and so we're still in conversation, but we do have conditional. Approval, so we're, we're getting a lot closer than we were. Uh, another thing that I wanted to, uh, bring to our attention is that at our last meeting. Well, we were here, they had the football or the fall, uh, awards. And the South Dakota Football, uh, Association. Considered the community of Wall as being a friend of football and they gave us this award. And Lex, uh, thought that the best place to display that is here at our office. But they just wanted to recognize all the things that we did for, for the football team on their. A magnificent journey to winning, um, that championship. So I wanted to share that with you. And then a follow up for the library, uh, it was brought to our attention recently that. Uh, there'd been some inappropriate calls going into the library to address that issue, we met with law enforcement. And, uh, determine a plan of action, we got phone IDs on the library and every other phone. With the city now so that we can identify those kinds of calls if those are, are coming in and we. Uh, worked out a strategy with the, the librarian. So I wanted to report that we, it was brought to our attention and we followed up and we've taken action. And then we had a storm and so she hasn't been in the library, so. But it's all showing up on the ID if there's any coming in, so, okay. So that's all, okay. So Kelly then, that brings us to your finance officer report.
Good evening, um, I just have a short report today due to the winter storm, trash pickup was moved to. December twenty second, this Thursday. It has not been changed with the cold temperatures, we'll keep you updated on Facebook as well as the. Red alert system if it does change, um, and with that, we've had a couple of people asking if. That delay in trash pickup changes their utility bill at all, it does not because. They're picking up two weeks worth of trash and they base their billing by tonnage, so that's all the update I have. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, finance officer report.
So, last week I was supposed to be gone to, uh, here for my municipal board. Meeting that I sit on, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped. First of all, council meeting changes. Um, typically in January, the second meeting, there is a conflict with some other. Meetings that are being held in here, and so, um. We should have it on the nineteenth, I believe, and I'm asking if we can. Move it to the twenty fourth of January. If anybody has any confidence with that. And then I have a conflict with the February meeting, um. Well, I just think if we did it the twenty fourth, or yeah, I'm. I'm out of town, scheduled to be out of town the second of February. And so I would like to move it to the sixth of February, Monday, that meeting instead of the seventh.
I'll see, so is there any objections or concerns with those two dates, going January twenty fourth and February sixth?
The me.
And I would need a motion to include these dates in this.
I'll make that motion.
Is some of us still checking our calendar? Okay.
Carolyn, wh- what is the sixth of February, Monday?
It's a Monday.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we change council meeting dates to January twenty fourth and February sixth. All those, any other comments or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
All right, aye.
Close, motion carried. Okay, now talk about your board meeting.
Um, I was supposed to be in here, but of course with the prediction of the weather, they chose to schedule a Zoom meeting and so that was on. Wednesday and it was a good meeting, uh, most everybody was in attendance of it, of course, and, um. We do have a new, uh, municipal lake director, Yvonne Taylor, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, she's that name, she's. Been kicking us playing forever, um, we now have, uh.
David Rees.
What's last name?
Rees.
Reese, yeah, I just, like. Um, I think he's going to be very good, so he actually ran the board meeting and gave us, uh. Legislative updates of what bills are going to be watching for this during the session and getting our input, of course, um. How we felt we should be looking at it, any changes needed. Yvonne will still be, um. Lobbying for us, we do have a contract that we approved at that meeting for her to continue to do some lobbying, we kind of. Show him results a little bit, he has a little bit of experience with lobbying, but. He's feeling very comfortable that he has Yvonne there. And then that's kind of my conflict in the February. I'll be out of town that first week and then move it to the sixth because the river suffer will be the February seventh, so. I will be asking again, but that's when we do meet with the legislators and, um. And talk to them one on one and then you can go to, uh, the next stage of the capital. And watch some sessions and stuff, so it's really a good education. That's the update that I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, Vera. I'm, I'm sorry you weren't here earlier, I understand where you weren't, but you've got lots of kudos tonight so far.
Oh, thank you.
Great job that the city has, and I know you guys were working at four thirty in the morning until ten thirty at night. So people are very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
So with that, would you like to give us a report, and I understand you do need to leave again?
Yeah, uh, follow up on Jacklows Corner, I talked to the Doll Brothers and they were. They were going to come down and take care of it, the guy that was supposed to clean it up came down the night the storm hit. And rolled his vehicle in the ditch out west of town, so I don't know what's going to happen now. So. But they said they'll leave it then, it's just some of the stuff that they're going to, some, most of the wood that they're going to use in another project and haul it out.
Well, I do re- appreciate that kind of reaction from a new business that we addressed. So I appreciate Dolls for doing that because, um, to be able to just communicate with them and they agree that. Yes, they will clean up their site, that is very much appreciated.
Thanks, send the text the first time they did it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so like, well, I guess we'll build a fence around it then, I better call them. But yeah, so no, they were, they were, they, they didn't know that that guy. Cause they had paid that guy to stay there and clean it up, and they paid him a bunch of money and just did some work.
They didn't even realize it.
Yeah, they left. I think they finished up there and they said that they went to Tennessee and they just got back from Tennessee the day after. That meeting that we talked about, so they were, yeah, in the states, so.
Well, that's very good.
And they seem like really good guys.
Yeah.
Uh, Blizzard update.
Blizzard?
It was a Blizzard, alright, yeah, I'm kind of glad we went out and worked during it or else we would probably. There'll be snow, yeah. So had a few little. One of the driveline on our loader broke, um, a bolt broke off, but Todd, TDM was. There to help Trevor fix it, so we got that fixed up pretty quick. Um, we leased a, leased a loader, glad I called the guy, I called him Monday morning at like seven thirty and he had to hear the board news. So it was a lifesaver to have that, moved a lot of snow. Um, first time using the bee plow on the, on the blade. I know I didn't like it so much, it's kind of funny because. But I, I think it went really well, um, the guys all did really good. Just they were there on time and ready to build, so.
Thank you for helping out the school, Pandy did mention that.
Yep.
With all the work that you guys did up there, that would very much appreciate it.
Yeah, I think every morning for like three days, I, West River guys followed me. Out to West River and busting through the snowbanks out there, so. So yeah, there was a lot of help by everyone and there's a lot of people in the community, I mean, a ton of people that helped move snow, Joe, Chad. John Kitterman, Jim Kitterman, there's just a ton of people that, that helped to move the snow. So a lot of people bought us lunch, breakfast, it was really nice. We appreciated that too, so it was nice to have a decent meal instead of a microwave sandwich.
So what's your next plan then?
Next plan is to haul some of it off. Um, gonna start with. Like the safety, traffic safety, you know, stuff that's in the road. So people can see, we'll move that off and then we'll go to the people that I asked if we could pile snow on their property. Um, cause we used to pilot where the jacklowlings is and now that's gone, so. I asked Zach and Zach was grateful not to let us do it there, appreciate that. We'll move it off and straighten up the lot again if we mess it up in the springtime, so, and then just everywhere else. Hopefully we don't get another big one.
That was all concrete in there, right Zach?
Yeah. And I'll just kind of keep, I'll keep an eye on stuff a bit, if. We're going to get something big, then I might line some people up to be a little more aggressive. Of hauling it out, but. I don't know if you guys have seen all the piles, but there's a lot of snow.
So right now, what is your hauling plan?
Um, it'll be, I think we're going to use TDM, we'll use one of their trucks and, and just one of their trucks. And then our truck and the two loaders. And we should be able to get the bottom with that, it's kind of split up in, in different places. Let's save the window, be here at ten o'clock.
Tonight?
Yeah, and I went out today and kind of cleared stuff out wider and went out on stone drivers, it was bad. I don't know, people thought maybe I was moving people's driveways, but I was just getting it back so it wouldn't. Filling in as much hopefully and Kim Beers went out in the, in the field. To the west and made some windrows, so hopefully that'll, that'll catch some of that. I'm in there in the town, so.
I could ruin my house.
I would just fuck it there when there's snow when you fill it. Blow Mary's yard. But no, that's, that's our plan is to start working on it.
Okay.
Thank you for getting mail, we were open.
Yeah, sorry, it was last minute, but.
Truck didn't show up till today.
Yeah, no, it was an interesting story.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
I didn't even get him, well, I did get a West River electric truck that didn't leave.
Then you just moved it.
Oh yeah, I did move it pretty good, they were parked in front of the Red Rock and, you know, Tatum's pretty new and we can, we take the loader in the. The blade and push a whole bunch together and he started pushing me over to the side and I looked over and seen the West River truck move. So I went inside the Red Rock, like, hey guys, and they all started laughing. And went out there and it just shined the motor up a little bit, so.
Here, I hate to ask, are the two unlicensed vehicles in your road for snow removal up on my ends of town?
Oh, there's a lot of them that were.
Yeah, I just see them bend their own fall.
Yeah, they. Yeah, there's.
Yeah, it does work better if they're off the street.
Yeah.
When you come through, okay.
And then costs, uh, I don't know, we, we leased that loader for five thousand dollars for the month. Um, and then of course, just a few more man hours and, and I did tell Todd to save. Right down this time for helping us work on that loader and getting it back together and. Um, it got kind of scary there for a little while, we ran out of fuel, Calvin ran out of fuel and BJ didn't have any fuel. But luckily, we got some.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
I'm gonna go see if I can help those guys get their pickup. They drove. A guy drove in there. I don't know what they're hauling, haven't seen it, but they, they had a guy hauling something and he went on the old road, highway fourteen. And where the bridge is washed out over there, they got stuck. And the guy just left the vehicle, the owners had to come out from Illinois. Get it, so. Helping those guys out.
So it's a truck down there?
It's a, it's a, not a semi truck, it's a big, uh, one ton.
Okay.
So yeah, I was gonna go from the west and it's like, that pitch is pretty deep, I was, you see my wolf in the snow. The ones I, I'm using my brain. Got stuck once the other day.
Yeah, we know about that.
So.
Yeah, stuck, I mean, that part, so, okay.
Anything else?
No.
All right.
Be careful.
Thank you, see you guys.
Oh yeah.
Thank you.
Watching.
Come on the diet.
Okay, so that brings us, uh, to items for discussion. And no action will be taken, does anyone have any comments?
Just, and I should ask Vera, but, but, um. Linda has asked me about the lights on the outside of the library, Linda, help me. Do not work. Um. And there's a piece of tape over the, the switch and just wondered. What was going on with that, and I think it's been that way for quite a while.
Okay, well, you know what, we're not going to address that when these guys are like mad.
I mean, heavens, no.
So put that on our to do list, please.
There is a reason. There, well, she's, she said, I don't remember what her name is, but. Yeah, I've asked a lot of people.
There's a term for junk, a little shock, yeah.
Maybe that's. But I thi- I think it's something to do with that, it's old wiring or something, but I was just. She asked me to bring it out.
Okay, no, not on the top of our list.
No.
But we will get it taken care of.
I don't have an item for discussion, but I want to put a little plug in there for economic development. Since we have a lot of business.
Since we have a lot of business owners in here. Um, I sent out surveys to you guys today, um, just asking about how economic development. Can help your business and then also some business information. And then I'd like to meet with business owners and managers here in the community to see how. Economic development can help you guys, so if you could fill that out and get back to me on that, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, I can't do it on my, among the survey on my fourth one, but I did transfer it to here tonight, so.
I'm glad you got it. Did you send it mail or?
I sent it even. I was gonna say, I was gonna send a copy with you guys too, so I'll bring a hard copy.
Want to do one, I did send.
Okay, so another. Item that I want um to to address here is what was the concern? Or the liability issue or whatever as far as letting people into this facility if we have another stolen. So can we put that on our to-do list of exploring that, coming back. Uh, at the next meeting then, so that if we, uh, I just feel confident. That we are probably gonna run into this issue again and we've got to be better prepared than what we were, but I. I want to delve into what the issue was with this building. Okay, so that brings us to the next city council meeting, which will be January fifth at six thirty. And uh we are uh ready to go into executive session. If I could have a motion to do so, please.
I made a motion that we join executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCO one dot two five dot two.
Okay, it's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, okay, motion carries. Thank you everyone for being here tonight, we appreciate it.
Merry Christmas, guys.
Merry Christmas, ma'am.
Merry Christmas.
I did send it out.
I did, I can't my snow from balling over you, what do you mean?
Snow's kind of like water, it just goes where it wants, whatever you want, yeah.
Okay, so I am going to declare us out of executive session, we'll move on to item number twenty-four. Uh, do I have a motion in that respect?
Yes, I make a motion to be earmarked five hundred thousand dollars as collateral.
Okay, there's been a motion to um earmark five hundred thousand dollars. For collateral for the, with the South Dakota Housing Authority, is there a second?
Yeah.
Kelly has seconded, any other conversation and questions? If not, all those uh in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries. Number twenty-five is revision to employee plot policy six point five one. Would I have a motion in that effect?
I would make the emotion to approve the revision to the policy for health insurance reimbursement six point five.
Hey, there's been, been a motion by Mike and a second by Jerry to revise the six point five one. Um. Uh, policy, any more discussion, questions, concerns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, okay, is there any other uh business to come before this um council?
Treasury bonds mature in twenty or thirty years.
Thank you for bringing that. Right, twenty to thirty.
Yeah.
I better make note of.
Two different ones, twenty or thirty years.
Okay, and they're seven percent, right?
Well.
Didn't say that, okay, all right, so now we know three bonds, so with that being said, the meeting is adjourned.
Byron was slightly off. Slightly, but.